All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to East Hampton Village Board Meeting. Today is November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, eleven o'clock in the morning, and we are going to start our meeting, but first, we're going to do a pledge of allegiance. Everyone would stand. Kenny?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ken. So I have a couple of announcements I just want to go over before we get into our presentations, before we get into our meeting. Just wanted to thank everybody who came out and supported the veterans over the Veterans Weekend and Veterans Day. We had actually two parades. One was on the eleventh, which was a small parade that went from basically London Jewelers to the windmill, and then on Saturday, the thirteenth, we had another one, and it was a little bit larger. And we're talking with the veterans now, and we think we're going to combine the two parades and make one parade, and it'll be on the actual Veterans Day moving forward. But it's still in the works. But really nice turnout. Both days were beautiful, and it was really nice to see everybody out supporting and cheering on the vets. So we're going to continue that tradition. We're just going to figure out how exactly we're going to do it so we don't have to have two parades. So that was that. I want to announce that we're having our, the Santa Parade will be on December fourth, which is Saturday. I think it's starting at eleven o'clock this year. So hopefully, everybody can come out and join us for that. We're also doing a holiday toy drive and food drive, and we're asking people to bring unwrapped toys to Village Hall, drop them off. This is in an effort to help the Kiwanis Club Toys for Tots. And we're also doing a food drive, which we will then distribute the food to the food pantries. So anybody who has food or toys they'd like to drop off, you can do it at Village Hall. The last thing I have is, I'd like to thank Sandra. Again, this year, she's organized the pie drive with the food pantries. They're making over three hundred pies, which they started, I think, yesterday, Sandra. Why don't you talk a little bit about it?
Yes, we're happy to be able to give to our community. We are doing three hundred pies. We're giving pies to East Hampton Food Pantry Springs and the senior citizen this year. So we're really happy to be able to give some to the people that need. I know people don't think about it, but we, there is a lot of food insecurity, especially with this pandemic, and we're telling people to please give. We have it in the, in Village Hall. We can give for the pantries, and it's a good time to be nice to others.
That's great. Why don't you just announce who's on your pie bake and give them a little credit for putting in all this hard work?
The crew is Jenny Balladron, Lisa, your wife, of course. Who else? Is Carol Hayes and Trish Erickson. Who else? I forgot someone else. Not sure.
Well, I heard Brad Billitt was there yesterday making pies.
Oh, Brad was there? Yeah, that's true. And I'm forgetting her name, but she knows Susan and I'm forgetting Dominique, I think it was her name. I'm sorry, forgot her name. So...
I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, Sandra.
You did.
Thanks to the whole team for doing that. It's really nice that we can give back to the community and do such a nice thing. And that's a lot of pies, by the way. So thanks again. All right. So we're going to jump right into the presentations. I'm going to call on Hugh to give us a presentation about Judd Bannister, who's a former mayor of the village of East Hampton. And again, this is in accordance with my plan to honor each of the past mayors by dedicating the street that they lived on and when they served as mayor for the village.
Okay. The first information I had was given to me by Carol and Steve Rideout. Carol is the niece of Judson Bannister. The first East Hampton steam laundry was built by Judd and his brother in nineteen oh four on Cedar Street. They separated as business partners, and the laundry burned. And in nineteen twelve, Judd built a second one on Race Lane in nineteen twelve. That one burned too. And then he built a brick one, much still standing on Race Lane in nineteen thirteen, running it for forty-one years until he sold it to his nephew in nineteen fifty-four. And you know where the laundry restaurant was? Well, that's where the laundry was. That's why it was called a laundry. And during the night, he was the, during the nineteen thirty-eight hurricane, the laundry's delivery wagon was used to take Dominic Grace severely injured when his garage collapsed to the Southampton Hospital. Judd was a senior member of the Masons and was mayor during World War Two. They supported Christmas events for children with Judd playing Santa Claus several years. He served as president of the New York Conference of Mayors from nineteen fifty to fifty-one. In retirement, he served as finance chairman for the construction of a new building of the first Methodist church. Now, while he was mayor, he was the longest-serving mayor at the time, from nineteen thirty-six to nineteen fifty-four. He served both as the chief of the fire department and the mayor. He was the mayor during the Depression, the hurricanes of thirty-eight, and World War Two. Main Beach was purchased while he was mayor. He had the Hook Mill restored. The Triangle Land at Bating Hollow and Montauk Highway was purchased and later became Bannister Park. The area that became the Nature Trail was preserved under his leadership. Wedgewood plates were purchased to be sold at Home Sweet Home. Colored lights were hung on Main Street for Christmas. Sidewalks were constructed of brick in the historic district. The North End Cemetery was taken care of by the village. The village was debt-free during his leadership, and Fritz Letty was appointed police chief. So these are the, this is the information we have at Judd Bannister, and I will be delivering this again tomorrow at the corner of McGurk and Cooper Lane, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. So we're going to meet there at two o'clock, and family's going to meet us, and you can deliver this to them then. And we also have a proclamation for them as well. So if June, if you could read that proclamation?
Sure. In recognition of Judson Bannister, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of East Hampton would like to recognize Judson Bannister for his honorable service to the village of East Hampton as mayor from nineteen thirty-six to nineteen fifty-four, whereas the mayor of the village of East Hampton, Judson Bannister, made an important and lasting contribution to the village and represents a key part of its history, this honorary designation pays tribute to Judson Bannister for his eighteen years of service to the village as mayor. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Larson, mayor of the village of East Hampton, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Incorporated Village of East Hampton, do hereby proclaim that Cooper Lane shall bear the honorary name Honorable Judson Bannister.
Terrific. Thank you. Are you all wrapped up, Hugh?
Yeah, and I have, what I just read you, June made up a nice folder, and we're going to put that in the folder and give that to them, too.
Yes, I have one on my desk as well, so.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we are going to be talking about Katie Babcock, and I'm going to ask the chief to speak about Katie. And then we also have Tim Babcock on the line here. So when he'll, once the chief's done, maybe he can tell us a little bit about Katie, and then I have a little story as well. So go ahead, chief.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are talking about Catherine Katie Babcock today, and we were putting forward the idea and the proclamation to dedicate the Georgia Coast Guard Beach Building in her name. As many of you know, Katie was a long-serving East Hampton Village beach manager, inspirational leader, and has as well spent a great deal of time as a crossing guard for the East Hampton Village PD many years ago. But she served us well and the members of the community, and we're very proud of her service and wanted to take the time to recognize her efforts on behalf of the community and thank her and her family for being there for the community all these years. And we have Tim Babcock, Katie's son, here with us, and he had a couple of things to add. And Tim, if you would?
Good morning, everybody. Thanks, Chris. I really do appreciate it. And Mayor Larson and the board, on behalf of our family, I really do appreciate this honor from my mother. She's going to be tickled pink. Anyway, Catherine Babcock, Warren Catherine Barzdis. She lived almost her entire life on Frederica Lane on the east side of the village. She attended East Hampton High School and graduated nineteen forty-one. She married my father, Lyman Babcock, from Sarek Harbor, and brought up four children. Many of you know Lyman Babcock, N.C. Peters, myself, and Amy Sullivan. Actually, Amy and N.C. still live on the compound on Frederica Lane. Anyway, so she, she also has ten grandchildren and seventeen great-grandchildren.
Wow.
Yep. Anyway, so she started working for the village in early nineteen sixty, I think it was sixty-one, as a school crossing guard in front of the brand-new John Marshall School. She was the first female crossing guard. She worked on her post on Church Street until the mid-eighties. While she was there, she welcomed many students, families, and school personnel. All the children call her Kate. Everyone calls her Kate. Over the many years, she formed, many former students fondly remember her and her stories. Kate got to know most all her regular students. We was crossed every day. And, you know, in their typical fashion, she noticed this one girl was missing for a couple of days. So when she finally comes back to school, my mother inquired why she was absent. She said, "Oh, I had a terrible disease. I had dying rear." These are the stories my mom would tell about the kids. And more than one, on more than one occasion, Fred Williams, who was the undertaker at the time, would stop us her out in front of her, take out his tape measure, and measure her up. Yeah, he was a character. Anyway, whoa, losing this one, falling apart here. And another assignment that she had was providing security for the football games on the Harriet Park. She was always there for all the games, especially when Lyman and I played. So, and then she also was, did matron duty for both the village and the town. So whenever the phone rang after ten o'clock at night, especially around the full moons, we never answered, you know? Then it's one of the other cops would say, "Hey, Kate, we got a hot one here for you." Anyway, so her favorite job, though, was Main Beach. She started there as a traffic control officer during the summers, and during busy times, it was a really challenge to keep everybody moving and happy. You never know what or who you were going to encounter. One particular story she tells about this group of young men who were always up at the fifteen-minute zone and always had an issue about moving along, come to find out, it was the loving spoonful. So anyway, she loved working on the beach, and with all those different types of experiences, a host of others, she met a lot of famous people, regular people, and she treated everybody the same. You know, no matter who you are, you've got the same treatment. And while she was there at the beach, she employed a lot of locals as beach boys, lifeguards, and parkings attendants. She, you know, as Chris will tell you, people will tell you, that she ran a very tight ship, and her famous saying was, "Not on my beach." At one point, she had difficulty finding lifeguards. Many, as you know, the Atlantic Surf on Long Island is very challenging, especially for lifeguards. So it was a challenge to get lifeguards. So she contacted the head of the county lifeguard department, Joe Dooley, and challenged him to hold lifeguard tests at Main Beach. He relented after many times, and then the many future lifeguards were developed as a result of that agreement. The rest is history, and led to a lifelong friendship between Mr. Dooley and my mother. Main Beach has become a very popular place and a busy spot for residents. Like I said, many famous people would show up there and whatnot. One of the main reasons is she kept that beach clean. She'd have the beach boys and the lifeguards out there raking all the time. She'd even send the beach boys to some of the other beaches and make sure they were kept clean. And it was during this time, I do believe, my mother actually said that, you know, we need another beach open with lifeguards, and opened up Georgia. So I do believe my mother was the one who actually started opening up Georgia and putting lifeguards down there. The other thing that she did, working with Pat Malkaroy, is she implemented the beach sticker system, the one that's still deployed today. She went on to manage the beach for about thirteen very successful years, serving as both effective administrator and ambassador to the village. She retired from Main Beach in nineteen seventy-nine, and yet continued to serve the village in her other capacities. In total, my mother has got twenty-five years of dedicated service to the village. So again, on behalf of the family, my mother, I really do appreciate what the board is doing. I think it's a wonderful thing. Thank you all.
Thanks, Tim. I have to say, you know, Dave Driscoll was actually the one who approached me on it, but I think Chief Tracy even approached me before that, and it's just an honor to do something like this for your mom. My earliest memories of her, I think I was like seven or eight years old. I used to live on the corner of Buell Lane and Church Street, and I would walk to school, and of course, that's where her station was. So I would see her every single morning. So that's my memories of her. And then I think, when you were mentioning matron duty, I think we used her, chief, if I'm remembering correctly, even when we were there, I think she was working as a matron a little bit. Does that, is that possible?
I remember her, I remember her as a matron and a crossing guard. The only thing I don't remember is if you were, you and I were employed at the time.
Right.
That's kind of fuzzy for me at my age.
Well, Tim, it was like mid, the mid-eighties. Would that be, would she still have been doing matron duty?
That was towards the end of her doing matron duty, yes.
Yeah, so.
So she was still, yeah.
Okay. All right, great.
May I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Of course, you.
Yeah. Well, when you do the dedication down at the Georgia Go Ice Association, Tim should do the talk there, not me. That was wonderful. Can he?
Thanks, Hugh. I appreciate that. Put me on the spot again.
Yeah. Couldn't he do it?
Of course he could. I thought maybe you might have some, you know?
I'll look up, but the main speaker should be him, if you do it. I'll be there, but okay.
That's fine. That's great. All right. Well, Tim, before you sign off, we do have a proclamation. I'm going to ask June to read. June?
Okay. In recognition of Catherine Katie Babcock, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of East Hampton would like to recognize Catherine Katie Babcock for her dedication as beach manager from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy-nine, and her years as crossing guard, traffic control officer, and matron. And whereas Katie Babcock is remembered fondly as beach manager for her fierce dedication to the protection of the beaches and the phrase "not on my beach," now therefore, I, Jerry Larson, mayor of the village of East Hampton, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Incorporated Village of East Hampton, in gratitude of her devotion as beach manager and in honor of her recent one-hundredth birthday, hereby dedicate the Georgia Beach Building to her, commemorated with a ten-by-ten Browns plaque to be affixed to the building.
Terrific. Thank you, June. So, Tim, as soon as that plaque, which was just displayed on the screen, as soon as that is in, we will arrange with you and your family to do the presentation at the beach.
Look forward to it, mayor. Thank you very much.
That'll be great. Thanks for coming on. We appreciate it. Say hi to everyone, and this is why I look forward to doing this.
Yep.
Thanks again. Thanks, chief. All right. Next up, we have Kurt Miller, who's going to explain, do a short presentation on this new program that we're instituting called BenCor.
Morning. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
So I'm going to give a very brief overview of what a special pay plan is, because this is a concept that will benefit not only the employees of the village of East Hampton, but also the village itself. Special pay plans are for accumulated sick and vacation pay. The way that the village handles that today is a check is just paid out to the individual who is retiring. The problem with that is, when that's paid out, when somebody is retiring, they're getting fully taxed on it at the moment that they are also retiring. A lot of employees don't want to take that money as they're retiring, so they instead want to be able to defer that. We've developed this special pay plan, which is a mandatory program that has the contributions of the accumulated sick or vacation pay paid into a retirement account in that employee's name. What is the benefit of that? Number one, they get to defer the state and federal income tax until they want to use the money. Number two, because it's a mandatory program, the employee doesn't ever have to pay Social Security or Medicare tax on it. It is deemed to be an employer contribution and therefore is not subject to the Social Security and Medicare tax, which can add up to as much as seven-point four, seven-point-six-five percent on that money. Because the employee doesn't have to pay the Social Security or Medicare, the village also saves that amount of money, that seven-point-six-five percent, because they don't have to put in the match. So it's a win-win for both the employee and the village. The program doesn't cost the village anything. It doesn't cost the employee anything. The program is put in place, it looks just like a 401K or 457 plan. There are a host of different investment options that they can choose to have the money invested in. That is purely at their discretion and how they want to invest it. But again, it's a program that benefits both the village and the employee. So we have done this in a number of other towns and villages around Long Island, including Smithtown, the town of East Hampton, the town of Southampton, Sands Point, Northport. We, our largest client on the island is actually Suffolk County. The county has done this now for about five years. And just to put it in perspective, the county saves about half a million dollars a year from the contributions going into this. Clearly, the savings for the village are not going to be at that level because your payouts aren't that high, and you don't have as many employees as the county, but it's still a savings to the village at no cost to you. So I thank you for your time, mayor. I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any, or...
No, it seems pretty straightforward. Does anybody have questions? Anybody on the board?
Yeah, I just want to know, we are not required to fund this until the employee separates, correct?
That is exactly correct. The, really, it doesn't change your funding at all, because you would have been paying out that amount to that employee when they retired anyway. So now, instead of it going straight as a check where you're going to have the Social Security and labor burden on that, now it's just going to be a contribution into the retirement plan for them, and you save that money.
It sounds like a no-brainer to me.
We hear that a lot.
Any other questions before we? Nope. Kurt, I appreciate you coming on.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, I have Brad Billitt, who's the president of the East Hampton Village Foundation, and also my very good friend. Welcome, Brad.
Hi, how are you, mayor?
Good. How you doing?
I'm doing fine. I am here in a very nice purpose to give you a check for two hundred and six thousand dollars, five hundred and forty, for phase one of Harriet Park. I'm going to back up a little bit so you can see the check. That's it. And we would ask from the foundation that you accept this on behalf of the foundation for the first phase in the engineering of Harriet Park.
That's terrific. Like Kurt just said, that seems like a no-brainer. So we're going to thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you.
And like we said, that'll go towards phase one, and we're looking forward to hopefully starting that project very soon.
Great. Look forward to it, and I'm here for any questions, if anyone has any.
Anybody have any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Brad, thank you very much for the two hundred thousand dollars. It is going to a good cause. How much has the foundation raised in total so far?
We have raised for phase one, and this is including pledges, of about one-point-two million. We have not gotten that in yet. And then for phase two, we have a pledge for half a million. So a total is approximately about one-point-seven million. Part of that, we are waiting for a large portion of that that we should receive before December thirty-first, but it has been pledged to us.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Anyone else have questions? Brad, please stay on, though, in case there's any public comment.
Surely, I would happily do that.
Okay, great.
I'd just like to say thank you to Brad as well. Brad, job well done. This is wonderful news for the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. That concludes our presentations. I'm going to ask June to do a roll call of the board. June?
Sorry about that. Mayor Jerry Larson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi?
Present.
Trustee Arthur Graham?
Present.
Trustee Rose Brown? Absent.
Absent.
Trustee Sandra Melendez?
Present.
Administrator Marco Balladron?
Present.
And village attorney Vincent Messina?
Present.
Thank you.
And unmuted.
All right. Thanks for, thanks, everybody. So we're going to start with public hearings. The first public hearing was held open from October fifteenth. So if, June, if you could read that?
Sure. Introductory number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty-one, a proposed amendment to code chapter two-seventy-eight dash three zoning areas setback and height regulations regarding sellers, section one legislative intent. The Board of Trustees of the villages of East Hampton has received numerous requests from the public with respect to the dimensional limitations currently in effect with respect to the size of sellers of single-family residences. The board finds and determines that the present limitations on sellers may be relaxed if appropriate limitations are in place, which would mitigate any potential adverse impacts, and the code should be amended to reflect the same.
All right. Does any board members have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor. We had said before that you had originally proposed twenty-five percent of the footprint of the house. I notice here in the code now, it says twenty-five percent of the GFA. That seems to be excessive.
I'm going to let Billy talk about that, or Vinnie, or Tom, whoever wants to speak up on this.
Thank you, mayor, and board members. I believe we wanted to just clarify that it was the gross floor area of the first floor. Billy, correct?
Yes, I believe you're correct. I believe it's the first floor footprint, gross floor area, first floor footprint.
That is correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yeah, it answers my question, but we need to change the language, because the, it says gross floor area of the structure. So we just changed "structure" to "first floor", and we should be good.
Okay. Consider it done. It should, it should have been done already, and if it wasn't, I'll take responsibility for that. But we will, that's how it will appear in the final version.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to add a couple of things. I do support this code change. One thing I'd like everyone to realize is that all of our neighboring hamlets allow this. This is not something new. Also, this was allowed in East Hampton Village up until somewhere around the two thousand and seventeen range. I might be a little wrong on that. Billy or Tom might be able to correct me, but, you know, again, this is, in my opinion, a very minimal rollback, so we don't further restrict our residents and what they can and cannot do on their property. You know, in my experience on the zoning board and the planning board, I have not seen very many of these applications. You know, in my experience on the zoning board and the planning board, I have, I have not seen very many of these applications in the past when we allowed them or we didn't allow them. I, I don't believe this is a big change. I really don't. And if some people do, I, I think I'd be more than happy to sit down and, and explain exactly my reasoning again. But, you know, in my opinion, this is an unnecessary code that we have. And it's just, it's again, further restricting our residents. Again, none of our neighboring hamlets have this rule or this code. And there's a reason for that. Again, you know, the North Haven, East Hampton, Sag Harbor, Southampton, all the villages don't have this. And I, I don't think we need to have this either. Uh, I also believe that the property's coverage and their setbacks, they do need to be, uh, conformed by. So there's a way to limit this or there is a late, a way to, you know, keep this in a, a normal and, and a, a, a small, um, aspect of, of our zoning where it, it can't get out of control because the, the property owners would still have to abide by their setbacks, by their coverage and, you know, all the other things that, that our code has. So, so those are the reasons why I'm in favor of this.
Terrific. And, and the other thing that we also were striking from the, the version of the law is they will not count towards coverage.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you say that again?
The underground struck, underground, um, structure will not count towards coverage. So the piece that sticks out from the first floor footprint, as long as it remains underground, will not count towards coverage.
What if they have a patio on top of it?
Then that's.
Would count as coverage?
That would count as coverage.
So it's a grassy area. It would not count as coverage?
Correct.
Anything that is above the ground counts as coverage, as it does now. So if it's an egress or a window well or a whatever, it counts as coverage. That doesn't change. This is just strictly underground. You can't see it. It does not protrude upwards. If I'm correct.
Well, again, that's not what it says in the code as written in the proposed, uh, code.
No, that's why I'm bringing it up, Ty. We're going to strike that out.
Why don't we count it as coverage?
Doesn't cover anything. It's underground. You can't, doesn't, it doesn't come above grounds. I mean, why would it count as coverage if it doesn't cover anything?
Because it exists. I mean, that, isn't that why it was listed in there in the first place? I know that some people complained about it and this is not a, a hill that I'm going to even fight on, much less die on.
I, I, I don't know why, I, I, I mean, I don't know why it was ever considered to be covered, counted as coverage. I mean, I believe coverage counts on things that are above ground, like they do now, like they would if someone had a window well or an egress or whatever, whatever would complement a basement. And again, in my opinion, if someone wanted a larger basement and they had an egress or a window well, that would have to count as coverage because it's, you know, above ground. It, it's, it's visible and it takes up space on your property. So I, I, I feel comfortable with the checks and balances of this code because if it protrudes out into the earth that you can see it, it counts as coverage. And if it doesn't, then it doesn't. And it can only be twenty, what is it, twenty-five percent of the floor footprint of the first floor? So I, I think, you know, you're, I don't, I want to call it the worst case scenario would be is that someone has a, a room that sticks out underground, under a property that doesn't have any windows or doesn't have any outdoor egress, which means it couldn't be a bedroom. Um, and, you know, it would be a storage room, I guess, of a utility room, a storage room, a place for people to put something that they wanted to take out of their basement to make room for something else. Am I right? Billy and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong. You guys are the zoning board experts.
Uh, yeah, so the, the, I can speak to why it was, you know, that the, the reason it was included originally, the first draft, was because the definition of structure is anything, you know, on the ground or below ground. So that was the reason for specifically including it in coverage. Now, there's a, a very compelling point to make that if it's covered by grass, then it shouldn't be, you know, it doesn't contribute to your coverage. Same as a septic system. We don't count septic systems or leaching pools as part of coverage. So it's along the same lines for exempting it.
All right. This is going to be amended to, uh, strike that last line?
Yes. And does anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I'm going to go to the phones and see if anybody is on the line, talk about this hearing.
We have no callers on the line right now.
All right. June, what do we have? Do we have any, uh, emails in reference to this?
I have an email from Ann Roberts, received November sixth. June, perhaps there will can be some tweaking, but I'm not in favor of either of the proposed laws, basement expansion and window wells. They erode existing village planning and will hasten the ongoing change in the character of the village. Respectfully, Ann Roberts. And, yes.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you. All I need to know is who it is and if they're.
Oh, sorry. Um, okay, one from Ann Roberts and one objecting from Coco Shan.
All right. And there's nobody on the line, Jody?
There's no one on the line.
Uh, Vinnie, quick question. Are we okay to close this hearing with those minor changes?
Yes, we are.
All right. So can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor? All right, passed and, I mean, uh, hearing's closed. All right, next one, June?
Introductory number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one, proposed amendment to code chapter two seventy-eight dash three A four B zoning areas setback and height regulations regarding window wells. Section one legislative intent. As a result of the mo- modification of limitations on sellers of single-family residential uses, other provisions of the code of the village of East Hampton must be modified to accommodate potential designs of such uses. Accordingly, the Board of Trustees of the Village of East Hampton does determine that the amendment set forth here in is an appropriate accommodation.
All right. This, uh, hearing was held over, held open since October fifteenth. So do, does the board have any comments?
The only question I have is the, the window wells have to be within eight feet of the basic footprint of the house. Is that how it reads?
Billy?
Correct. Yeah, they can protrude no further than eight feet. So within eight feet. Yep.
All right. That's in total or just any part of it needs to be within eight feet?
No, I would say in total. I think the way it's intended is to be in total.
Okay.
I agree.
Anyone else? How about callers, Jody?
There are still no callers on the line?
All right. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed.
Introductory number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-one, a proposed local law to opt out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries and or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the village of East Hampton.
Comments? Callers, Jody?
There are no callers on the line?
Right. Can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Next.
Introductory number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, a proposed code amendment to chapter two seventy-eight zoning concerning residential overnight parking. Legislative intent, the Board of Trustees of the Village of East Hampton seeks to mitigate any potential increase in on-street parking in residential areas. One method, one method of addressing this concern is to require sufficient off-street parking spaces. This local law seeks to impose off-street parking requirements for all one and two family residences.
Comments?
Uh, the only question I would have, this obviously doesn't, uh, apply to existing parking as it exists currently. So if somebody only has one parking space on their property, we're not going to make them put another one in.
Well, it makes, no, but it makes them like akin to illegal non-conforming use essentially, right?
Right. Now, if, if someone were to, uh, undertake an expansion of an exist, of a non-conforming existing house, then they would have to bring that into, uh, conformity in the future.
It would, uh, depend, I guess, on the size of the expansion. I, I mean, I, I leave that to Tom's interpretation. But essentially, if it's the minimus, no, uh, I don't think that's the intent. But, you know, if you were to double the size of your, your dwelling, then sure. Tom, are you in agreement like that?
Adding one bedroom.
Again, it depends on the overall size of the structure and the size of the improvement and the relationship between the two. I think that's the fairest way to say it.
Ty, I, I, you know, obviously, I think we would look to wherever possible, pick up, you know, off-street parking. So if a site is redeveloped, that is with vehicles to get a vehicle off the street.
Yeah, I, I don't want to make it a hardship on people as it exists now, so.
Understood. But if someone were to, um, oftentimes, you know, develop the property, you know, uh, I'll say excessively or, um, utilize, um, coverage that could, you know, theoretically be used for parking where it's not counted, you know, parking is not counted in a residential, but, you know, a driveway. You know, we'd just have to take it on a case-by-case basis and then what seems to make.
Discretion to the building department is probably all we need to do here.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question for Billy or Tom. If we pass this and then somebody doesn't have the right number of parking spaces and they come back for a building permit to do something on their property, how is this going to affect them?
In my opinion, I would say it matter, it, it only matters if they're adding bedrooms and if they're adding bedrooms over three. I think if somebody had an existing dwelling, that was four bedrooms and they were renovating it and it was going to stay as four bedrooms, to me, it doesn't affect their, their parking at all. If they have, you know, three bedrooms and they look to add one, I think it would be reasonable to say that they have to add an additional parking space above whatever it is they currently have. That's how I would think the code.
I would, I would agree as well.
It's all about bedroom count and.
Right. So, but if somebody right now has two parking spots and they currently have four bedrooms, so they're non-conforming now because we have, we would have this new law that would require one additional parking spot, I believe, right? So they wouldn't be forced then to, like, let's say, oh, they wanted to add on to the back of the house, put a laundry room.
No, I don't think, I, if they're not adding bedrooms, I don't think that's the trigger. I think, to me, the trigger is, uh, I defer to Tom, but I think the trigger is really adding bedrooms.
Most, most definitely. I mean, that, that's, that would be it, you know, um.
So, yeah, again, it would be subject to Tom's interpretation. The one thing I would point out, however, is that it would lead to more paved surfaces inevitably, um, on residential parcels where you would have to add the parking spots. So, um, you know, that's a consideration for the board as well. Less grass, less landscaping, more pavement.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
We have one caller on the line, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Could you put them through?
Yep. Caller.
Hello, uh, my name's David Gans. Hello. Uh, I have one question regarding this, um, new code. Is it, if you, if I, I have three bedrooms and I have two parking spaces and I have a guest visiting me. I have two cars also. Where, we, so the person who parks on my street is illegally parking? Is that correct?
Well, this, this law is technically yes, because of a different section of law though, David. This, this particular, uh, law is to, it's more of a zoning issue where we're trying to see if we need to have people, when they build their homes, to make sure they have enough parking on their property for the number of bedrooms they have. So this is, it's two separate issues. We have a, a law that's in place that's not very good and we're going, working on that to, that already restricts parking overnight between one and six AM for more than an hour on any street in the village. I think that's more.
I believe it's two AM to six AM. Right.
Whatever. So that's probably more of what you're talking about. It really is not relevant to this hearing.
All right. I just wanted to make sure because it, it seems as though, um, that if you have three bedrooms, you could, you cannot. Uh, now, if I was to put, uh, put a tar on the, to accommodate a third car, I'd also be losing grass. And isn't there a certain, um, percentage of the lot has to be clear from, let's say, um, rocks and tar and the likes. So there'll be, there'll be the footprint of the house. Does that become part of the footprint by, by putting, by expanding the driveway?
I'm going to defer to Billy on that or Tom.
So, uh, coverage specifically exempts driveways on residential property.
Okay.
So we, you know, the village encourages people to create adequate parking spaces so they don't penalize the parking area as coverage.
So I think, David, to maybe answer your question, I'm sorry. I think, David, to answer your question is that you're, you are okay the way you are now. However, if you were to add a bedroom, then you're going to have to add a parking spot. And parking spots don't count as coverage. So you would be, you would be, let's just say, required to add a parking spot and allowed to do so.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Minardi, you would also, um, again, if you can, if you converted within an existing structure, a room previously used for another purpose into a bedroom, that would also trigger the parking requirement so that your footprint doesn't even change and you might still have to, um, you know, add an additional spot.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks for calling in. Is there anybody else on the line, Jody?
There are no additional callers on the line.
All right. So is any other comments? I would, um, I'm not in favor of this. I, we, we already looked at the parking situations and we do not have a parking issue. And I'm not in favor of creating more parking, uh, on properties and losing lawns and things like that. So for those reasons, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this. But, you know, that's my opinion and I'll express it during the vote. If nobody else has any comments, I'm looking for a motion to close. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Our final hearing, June?
Introductory number thirty dash twenty twenty-one, a proposed amendment to code chapter thirty-five, officers and employees to provide updated residency requirements when hiring individuals to fulfill competitive classifications. Section one legislative intent, the village of East Hampton seeks to attract and retain the best and brightest individuals to be employed by the village. The Board of Trustees of the Village of East Hampton believes that one way to accomplish this responsibility is to fill competitive classifications by first appointing residents of the town of East Hampton.
Anybody have comments? Like, I have one, but does anybody have anything? I believe the only reason that we had to update this, if I'm correct, Vinnie, is because of the sixty days to ninety days?
Correct.
Correct. And that became, that was at a recommendation of civil service?
It was indeed.
That's the reason for the update.
Yep. Correct.
Okay. Any callers, Jody?
There are no new callers on the line?
All right. If there's no comments, then we will look for a motion to close the hearing.
It closed. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, hearing is closed. Um, Jody, still no callers, correct?
Correct.
All right. So we're going to move right into our resolutions. June?
Prove claim vouchers for the month of November.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Prove warrants as listed, general fund number sixteen, number nineteen, number twenty, guarantees, number seventeen, LoSAP number eighteen, and capital number twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approved budget transfer schedule number two, reference number two, dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approved departmental reports.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approved minutes for meetings held on April first and sixteenth, May sixth and twenty-first, June third and eighteenth, and July first and thirtieth.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor? Pass and carry.
Adopt negative sequo declarations with respect to introductory is number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-nine of twenty twenty-one.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt introductory number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one as local law number twenty-eight of twenty twenty-one, amending code section two seventy-eight dash three zoning area setback and height regulations regarding sellers.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt introductory number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one as local law number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, amending code two seventy-eight dash three zoning area setbacks and height regulations regarding window wells.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt introductory number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-one as local law thirty dash twenty twenty-one hereby adopting legislation to update of licensing and establishing cannabis dispensaries and or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the Village of East Hampton. This local law is subject to a thirty-day permissive referendum.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt introductory number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one as local law thirty-one dash twenty twenty-one, amending code two seventy-six zoning parking requirements regarding parking requirements for residential uses.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, uh, I am voting no.
I am voting yes.
Voting no.
I am voting no.
Right, that has been defeated.
Introductory number thirty dash twenty twenty-one as local law thirty-one dash twenty twenty-one, amending code chapter thirty-five, officers and employees to provide updated residency requirements.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one to approve two million, one fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars payment constituting the village's retirement contribution for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Employment retirement, employee retirement system would be nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one, police and fire would be one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number seventy-four dash twenty twenty-one to employ Brendan Regan as a part-time Department of Public Works labor at his current rate of forty-two dollars hourly effective retroactively to September twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number seventy-five dash twenty twenty-one to accept Wes Robertson as a new member of the fire department open ladder company. Number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. Welcome aboard, Wes.
Adopt resolution number seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one to approve the forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, sixty cent purchase of one twenty twenty-two Ford Expedition XL for Police Lieutenant Erickson.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this vehicle currently available?
No, Tiger, no, it's actually going to take about nine months. We normally get Tahos, but apparently they're, um, they dropped their municipal leasing um, availability for the next year. So we had to switch over to, to the Explorers or Expeditions, um, even to get this vehicle. And I think, um, I think it's, yeah, it's about nine months out.
Okay.
All right. June?
Oh, adopt resolution number seven.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did we vote on that? We did, right?
We did.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Adopt resolution number seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one to approve the purchase of nine trucks as listed in November second memo from the Department of Public Works at the total cost of nine hundred, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-one cents.
The board will remember that this is actually, um, Dave Collins presented this twice. I just wanted to make sure we thought that maybe there was going to be another addition, but we're all, we're all good with that. That should be upgrade all the heavy truck equipment.
That's great. Uh, motion?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And are these trucks also available or are they on a delayed delivery too, Marcos?
No, they're on a delay delivery. Everything is delayed, obviously, but, um, actually, if you can remember last October, the vote, uh, for the garbage truck, uh, I'm happy to report that that should be arriving within a couple of weeks.
Oh, that's terrific. I just want to, um, I just want to thank Dave. Um, he has a lot of, um, very old vehicles down at Highway and he's done a really terrific job to make them all look like a fleet. And, um, it actually looks, it looks pretty cool with the, uh, it's a bunch of old trucks, but they're all brand-new paint jobs. And, um, so he's, my point is, he's done a really, really great job for the village with the mess that he was handed, so.
Right. And the, the current DPW color scheme for our trucks is what?
Uh, green.
Green?
Yeah, just like his dad had.
Yeah. And a couple of the pickup trucks on this, uh, new proposal will be white because they're not available any other way, but we're, we're going to make them look like the rest of the fleet. So, uh, um, with the lettering and so everything will be consistent and, uh, brand recognition for the village.
Dave, I just tell you, you just don't, you're doing a great job for us. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the support you've given us. Uh, you know, it goes a long way. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Jim.
Adopt resolution number seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one to approve the creation of the Village of East Hampton Historic Preservation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This is, um, an idea that was presented to me from the Village Preservation Society. And basically, we are going to appoint a committee that will review applications at the board's request for projects that occur in our historic districts. So that'll be, uh, welcome to input that they'll have. And I think it's a great idea. And, um, we're going to move forward with it.
Right. Mr. Mayor, one, uh, clarification I would like to see is that in the, uh, document that was distributed to us, laying out what this committee does, uh, it often just refers uh, to the Board of Trustees as Village Board. Since there are, um, other village boards, I think that the language where it says village board should, and meaning to reference the trustees, should say Village Board of Trustees.
Yes, so, uh, uh, if I could speak to that, Mr. Mayor, I think, um, if you, if you'd like trustee Graham, you and I can sit down and go over it. I think more often than not, it refers to any particular board which may request or require the services of the committee. But if you'd like, I'll sit down with you and go over it and we'll make that clarification where appropriate.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, June?
Adopt resolution number seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one to accept and acknowledge the gift of a new twenty twenty Polaris ATV from East End Ocean Rescue and Jim Minardi.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. I want to thank Jim Minardi, which obviously is Chris's brother. He's done a great job for the, for the beaches, for the ocean, for the village, for the public. You can go on and on. He's just a terrific guy and really works hard. And it was really nice of him. He's donating this, this vehicle to us. So, thank you, Jimmy. If you're listening.
I'd just like to say one quick thing, and I know Drew is on the call. He might be able to explain this vehicle better than me. However, this is a very important vehicle that we've never had. Um, anyway, Drew's on, Drew, uh, if you could just give us a quick review of exactly how important and how excited you are for this Polaris.
Yeah, this new vehicle is kind of an upgrade of that blue one, the side-by-side we used last year. It'll have the addition of the possibility to add a stretcher or a Stokes Basket backboard to the back. Um, it has AC heat, so we can run it earlier and later into the season. Four-wheel drive. I believe there's a winch on the front. There is an emergency alert system in terms of lights and PA system, which the other unit didn't have. Uh, so it kind of allows the public to know we're responding to something where it's time-sensitive versus just driving back and forth, bringing equipment from beach to beach. So overall, it's a phenomenal asset for the village beaches. I'm very thankful that Jimmy was able to donate it to East End Ocean Rescue. Um, so overall, we're, we're excited to have it.
That's great. Thanks, Drew. If anybody's wondering who Drew is, just stand by for the next two resolutions.
Adopt resolution number eighty dash twenty twenty-one to create the position of full-time beach manager.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one to appoint Drew Smith to the position of full-time beach manager and chief lifeguard and annual salary of seventy-five thousand dollars effective December first, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Welcome aboard, Drew.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Adopt resolution number eighty-two dash twenty twenty-one to create the position of auto mechanic three.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number eighty-three dash twenty twenty-one to appoint David H. Jacobs to the position of full-time auto mechanic three at Central Garage at an annual salary of ninety thousand dollars effective January first, dash twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. Welcome aboard, Jake. I'm sorry.
Adopt resolution number eighty-four dash twenty twenty-one to approve an agreement with Electrify America for the vehicle charging stations in the Osborne lot.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. And I just want to thank Marcos for terrific job. Why don't you tell us a little about that negotiation?
Well, uh, we needed to complete, uh, with the Tesla lot that we had approved, I believe in April. Uh, we needed to kind of get this done with a, a company that would offer just EV charging. So Electrify America, I'm, I actually want to give credit to Tim Hill who's on this call. He really negotiated pretty much everything, but, um, we, the village got a good deal because of Tim, so I want to thank him.
Yeah, don't sell yourself short there, Mr. Balladron.
Uh, you know.
You wound up creating a revenue source for the village and, and, uh, you stuck to your guns on that. And, uh, that was, uh, to the village's benefit.
Vincent, you know I hate taking a compliment.
Yeah, one thing I would like.
It's one.
One thing I'd like to clarify on this is that, uh, on the first page and on page thirteen, uh, there are references to the town, not the village.
Yes, I brought them up.
Yeah, those have since been corrected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, June, back to you.
Adopt resolution number eighty-five dash twenty twenty-one to approve an agreement with outdoor lighting perspectives to install outdoor lighting at the windmills at the cost of ten, ten thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So excited about this. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is uplighting on the windmills?
Hold on one second. Pass and carry. Yeah, go ahead, Tiger.
Yes, this is, uh, Tiger, um, this, this actually really came in response to the Centennial celebrations. Um, the committee came up with an idea to just light the windmills that day. And people really took to it. They liked it. And this will give us the ability on days where we put the flags out, if we want to do red, white, and blue, or just keep it white lights or, or just, you know, whatever days the board decides. It gives us the ability to do that.
All right. Because we do have, uh, language someplace in the code. I'm not sure where, uh, that uplighting is not up to code. So I think that we probably ought to look to see where that is and make an exception to that.
Right. And it would be just onto the building itself. They're gonna, we're going to be looking at it, how they install it.
Terrific. June?
Adopt resolution number eighty-six dash twenty twenty-one to accept the donation of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and forty dollars from the East Hampton Village Foundation.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. Thank you again, Brad. Next, June?
Adopt resolution number eighty-six, eighty, sorry, eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-one to approve the two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and forty dollar proposal received from the village's consulting engineer, Cashin Associates, to provide engineering documents through bid phase services as outlined in the proposal dated November second, twenty twenty-one.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. Well, we had it for a few minutes, right? Easy come, easy go.
Adopt resolution number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-one to approve the Wallace Museum and Art Fund, Inc., a New York five oh one C three organization to operate at the Gardner Cottage Gallery and Museum at thirty-six James Lane.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. This is actually a very, um, exciting thing I think we're doing here is, uh, so we're going to be able to keep our museum open all the time. We're not going to have to pay the maintenance on the building. And uh, we don't have to pay an employee to operate it. So this, uh, this is a very smart idea, I believe, and and also Terry has been doing this for over a year for free for us. And he's really turned that museum into a popular destination, if you will. He's also holding local uh, art shows there from local artists. And it's really been well, well-received. He had over, I think, the one weekend he did it, had over three hundred people attend the art opening for a local artist. And it was just, um, he's just doing a great job. And I think this is going, saves money for the taxpayers and it gets our museum opened all, all the time. So very happy about this. Thanks, everybody.
Adopt resolution number eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-one to approve the six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar purchase from Firematic Supply of one Pierce, I'm sorry, one new Pierce fire apparatus mobile command vehicle equipped with a Freightliner M two dash one oh six cabin chassis for the police department as per the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one proposal.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. And like, Chief, just talk about this because this is going to go a long way to help us serve our outside obligations, correct? Outside contractual obligations.
Exactly. This, uh, vehicle, it is actually a communications and command vehicle. Uh, it will serve all the fire and EMS districts on the east end, um, southeast end of Long Island. Uh, as, as everyone knows, we dispatch fire and ambulance EMS for the entire nine-one-one district, which is basically everything from Bridgehampton to Montauk, Springs, Amagansett, East Hampton, and the Northwest Fire Protection, Protection District.
Springs, Amagansett, East Hampton, and the Northwest Fire Protection, Protection District. Uh, that previously included Bridgehampton, they have, uh, subscribed to another area, but, um, but still, it is in, within our nine one one district. Uh, the vehicle has mo- multiple radio systems inside it. It is able to serve as a backup dispatch vehicle for the entire, uh, region, our, our small region. Uh, in that, it should a fire department or EMS area have a system collapse whereby their repeater tower, their antenna, their ability to communicate in the field fails, that vehicle can be brought to the scene, uh, as it, as it is several times, uh, a year to Montauk, for example, because of their proximity and so forth. And we're actually able to dispatch fire and ambulance from that vehicle, and it is unlike any other vehicle in the county, so that is one unique aspect of it. It helps our feeder districts, uh, that we support, um, in case of emergency, obviously. It's a standalone backup functioning for the nine one one system. Should that fail or go down, it's a redundant system, but it is one that is uh, very much needed, and, uh, it's good to have. It serves the, serves the entire area. There is no backup to it. So, for example, with a fire vehicle, you have a similar fire vehicle nearby, within a couple of miles. This vehicle has no backup to it, so it, uh, it's unique. It is, uh, much needed, as you know, we, uh, we're using that ex-Frito-Lay van now that we joked about in, uh, in the summer. Um, they are expensive, but they're well worth the investment, and it will serve us well, and we appreciate the support.
Thanks, Chief, and I, I think it's important that the public is aware of this, because I have this conversation with people all the time, and they just don't, they don't know that the village is actually the nine one one center for the entire township. And that we, we then dispatch all of the fire and EMS from Montauk to Sag Harbor, including Springs and Amagansett, um, and that we answer all the nine one one phone calls for everyone. They come to our dispatch first, and then if it's basically not a life-threatening thing, we transfer it to the town police if it's just a police uh, involved thing that doesn't fall within, uh, East Hampton Village or Sag Harbor Village, because we dispatch their police department as well. So many years ago, Bridgehampton was one of our contractual districts. Obviously, the village charges all of these outside departments to pay in for their dispatching services. So the, these departments have options, though. They could go to the county, and the county will dispatch them for free, but they don't really get any, any services other than the call-out. They don't get any help with uh, finding the locations or anything like that. We have a very sophisticated system in dispatch that really has all the house numbers, and there's landmarks, and it's a very, very comprehensive system that helps our EMS and fire and police get to where they need to go. Um, you wouldn't get that from a county service, because they're not familiar with the area. So several years ago, Bridgehampton, um, left us because they've got a better price from Southampton Village to dispatch, so there is some competition out there. And I believe that we provide a better service than any other dispatching center, and this will add to that, um, service. This is something that, you know, Mike jokes about the van that we have, but that van was created years ago, and Mike was the guy who donated the van. And then we piecemealed it and put it together with some crafty employees we had. Um, Dave Griffiths was one of them, did all the woodwork in the van. Uh, Ron LaBrosi did all the radio work, and we put this thing together, and now it's one of the, um, it doesn't look like much, but the equipment inside that, like the chief is saying, can dispatch while they're driving if they had to. So we've used it several times during hurricanes. We've, uh, deployed it to Montauk, and I think it was during Irene or Sandy, I'm not sure which one, I can't remember now, but, you know, they lost police and fire communications, uh, from East Hampton to Montauk. So our van was able to be out there and actually picked up and was able to do the dispatching for fire and police out there, so. This, this is, goes a long way to keep us in the market, keep us competitive, and by far, we have better service, so. Uh, hopefully, Bridgehampton, you're always welcome back, so. Come on back. You might not get that low rate anymore, but come on back. Thanks, Chief.
Is this also a, uh, year of delivery?
I would say at least a year. Yeah, at least a year.
Well, better to get it what, before?
Right.
All right, June?
Adopt, adopt resolution number ninety dash twenty twenty one to appoint Barbara Layton, Antonio Bertello, Patrick Bistrain, Rick Slater, Gary Walanco, and Joan, I'm sorry, John Pizzo, as directors of the East Hampton Village Foundation, effective immediately.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Passed and carried. I wanna thank all of them for taking on this, um, obligation. You know, we started out, uh, with this concept, and then we brought Brad in, and, and Brad and, and Marcos working together, created this foundation. Brad then wrote the bylaws, then we appointed two, um, co-chairs. One was, uh, Kerry Doyle, and the other was John McGurk. And now that we have really started doing, uh, some serious fundraising, and we're, you know, moving forward with our, our proposals. Um, the bylaws allow me to appoint, I think, a total of nine to this board, and then the board is basically, uh, in, goes off on their own now, and they can, they can increase the board as they, uh, as they wish, so. I wanna thank all of them for coming on. They're a bunch of great people in our community and, uh, support everything we're doing, so. Thank you.
Approve lease agreement at the cost of one thousand three hundred and twenty five per month with Pitney Bowes for a new postage machine, folding machine, and color printer with supplies and maintenance included.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried, so, yeah, that's getting quite the workout. I think, uh, Lorraine is on it every day, so. Thanks for passing that. Next?
Adopt resolution number ninety one dash twenty twenty one to approve the implementation of the Ben Core Special Pay Plan for all eligible village employees.
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. That is all I have on my agenda. Are we missing any add-ons or anything?
No, that's.
That's it.
Sergeant, no, that's it, and, and I think we're not doing executive session.
Right, executive session is not necessary. Do we have any callers, Jody?
There are no callers on the line.
All right, then I will look for a motion to close.
So move.
And before we go, just wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy your holiday, and meeting is closed. Thank you.